Okay, this board's regular meeting will now be called to order. And first we'll have a public hearing on the Fields Waterline Replacement Project. Mr. Radcliffe is here to speak for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county staff, distinguished educational folks, and the general public. I want to apologize in advance that Dr. Austin and I went to Mr. Cope's wardrobe to pick out our jackets, so he's got the last remaining one. First off, before I start, is anybody here for the Fields Waterline Replacement hearing? I have a fact sheet to give you if you're here. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you all tonight to speak on behalf of the second stated public hearing for the Fields Waterline Replacement Project. This hearing coincides with the resolution of support that should be found in your board packets. I'd like to take this chance to personally thank all of the board members that have and are currently serving on the Linnawisco Board. A project like this does not get done without the support of those board members, and the matching funds for this project comes from the General Assembly Water Waste Water Funds that you all dish out. So, for those board members, thank you. Lee County proposes to seek community development block grant construction ready funds through the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for the Fields Waterline Replacement Project and is to be submitted this week Thursday. The request is $256,000. The other funding that I just spoke of is $84,436. That has already been approved this past week, Monday night's board meeting. The proposed project will complete the replacement over 6,450 linear feet of dilapidated and galvanized, failing galvanized water lines in the Fields community. The improvements will benefit 29 households, 20 of which are low to self-identified, low to moderate income. The total population of the projected project area is approximately 66, with 44 of those individuals self-identified as LMI, which meets the 60-plus percent threshold that DSHD requires. This project meets one of the CDPG core objectives of benefit to low to moderate income persons. The county has met the CDPG requirements for two duly advertised public hearings conducted February 23rd and August 15th. A NEPA required environmental review has also been conducted with no negative environmental impacts being identified in the process up to date. And hopefully, funding announcements for this application would be announced when or if they so choose to fund this project. Is there any questions I could answer from the board on this project?
Would the public like to ask anything or say anything on behalf of this project?
Full block grant.
This is under construction ready. It's a little different than a block grant that's submitted in March. This one is, you can only ask for up to 75 percent of the project cost, and the GA funds covers the rest of the 25 percent match. But in this, in this case, these projects are construction-ready, are literally ready to go, designed, permitted, NEPA document already cleared, and ready to go within 90 days to start. And then I think it has a mandatory one year to finish. So it's, it moves along a lot faster and it's a lot more prepared as a project than regular block grants.
I guess there's no questions. We thank you.
Thank you, and this would be...
Thank you for your work, hard work.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Linder. This is, like I said, should coincide with the resolution that's in your packet. If you also deem to take action on it, just make sure that your beloved county administrator gets a copy of it and get filled good for the end, and we'll submit this project by the end of the week. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We need to go ahead and adopt the resolution. Make motion we adopt Resolution 17-009 for the Fields Waterline Replacement Project Community Development Block Grant Application.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the list, we have special, sorry, special use permit, Mr. Robert McPherson.
Mr. Chairman, this came before the Planning Commission last month. Mr. McPherson has requested a special use permit to allow farm equipment sales in an A1 agricultural district. His property is located on the north side of US Highway 58, approximately 1.25 miles west of Route 670, Integertown Road, and consists of 1.7 acres of land. It's just east of the industrial park property there at Rose Hill. At the Planning Commission hearing, there was no one in attendance in opposition to this, although there was a phone call in the week or so before the public hearing from an adjacent property owner who's also outstate residence who objected to it. They did not state the reasons for the objection, just that they objected to it. It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and comes to you tonight with that.
You all won't say anything before we take it up?
Tell us about it.
Well, we're just looking to start up a dealership in that area. We'll be placing tractors out in front, that's our four lane. We do plan on having service department, parts department, try to get a good business, good business going in that area. We do have places shot there to do the work on the, on the equipment whenever, whenever it's needed. That's really about all I know to say.
Do you have any franchise yet for the new equipment?
No.
But you have an idea of which direction you're going in with that?
Yes, we've got two that we're talking to.
But do you have a building already up, or are you planning to put a building?
There's a building already there that we've used for several years for, to do mechanical work in.
Is it on the main road, or is it off the road?
It's just about 100 feet off of the road.
So it's very visible?
Yes.
On the main road that goes to Cullen Gap?
Yes.
Contractors, what are you going to say? What are you trying to say?
We've just got two that we're looking at right now. We've not 100% made up our mind which ones it will be. A Branson or a Cormick is what we're looking at right now.
Any more question? Well, I have another question. What usually holds a business up, a new business? It's capital. I know you come to us for some money, that's why you're here? No, you're just here for the permission?
Just a permit.
Okay, so do you feel like you have the capital to make this successful?
Yes.
You do? Good. I'd like to hear.
I mean, we've already got in the process of, right now, I believe everything's just ready to go, and we're just waiting for the decision and decide which tractor we want to go with, and we'll be ready to go.
Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to make a motion to go ahead and approve it for them, permit, so they can, you know, we don't want to hold back any business that we can get.
Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
I'll second. Okay, we got a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
We thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Get out there and do it. Go ahead. Okay, next on the list is departmental report. Got any questions on the report? Okay, so go to the treasurer's report. I do have a comment to make on that. Reason that, out of here. It's a couple of five buildings that, 2017, 10 million, 8.6, 8.74, and July 2016, 13 million, 22, what's, what happened there, Mr. Cope?
Well, you've tried to make the timing on some of the, some of the loans that had made, like the hospital loans earlier than that, so it would not be involved in that. Without looking at each line item down through there, there's quite a bit of difference in funds in the school cafeteria and operating fund from 2016 to 2017. Those two funds in '16, there was a total of almost $4 million. At the end of July this year, there was only about $1.2 million, so that's the primary difference right there. The general fund balance is just slightly higher than it was in July 2016. So, the bulk of that is in the, is in the school system, just the amount of funds on hand.
Yeah, you know, let's get this tonight, I might, I'm looking for a focus.
Right.
Any more questions on the treasurer's report? Have any visitors want to express anything tonight? Okay, if there's no, if no one wants to come forward for public expression, then we'll move on to the approval amendments for July 18, 2017, regular meeting. July 19, 2017, recess meeting. July 27, 2017, recess meeting. Make a motion to accept amendments presented. I'll second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Got any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have refund required. Hold on, is that right? Just the one, the one, the Leroy?
I made a motion we approve the refund, the 57 dollars and 62 cents.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we got a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we go to county administrator report. Payroll warrants have been issued. On the 911 stuff, things that about called up a lot of that for the signs as much as that was?
I'm not sure. I know I've seen a couple of invoices come in, in the last month. I'm not sure what he still got on the list to be repaired.
I didn't know what that, that gives, y'all left for?
There were several on there. I mean, it's a pretty extensive list on the two invoices I saw, but I can check with him and see what's left on it.
Okay, I make a motion to pay the bills. Okay, we got a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you jumped, jumped one there. We have delegations.
Yeah, okay, got you.
Payroll warrants is just a report, the payroll's been made, it's not...
Okay, first, in our delegations, we got Mountain Empire, Community College, Dr. Kristen Westover.
Thank you, Chairman Linder, members of the board. I've got some handouts here just to leave with you all, and if you want to share them, just a little bit about the college, some opportunities, so I'm going to leave them with Mr. Cope. I'll take a moment just to introduce myself, and then I'll share a little bit about the happenings at the college, and then, since I'm new to the area, maybe just a little bit about where I came from, kind of why I'm here. Well, first of all, there are lots, lots going on at the college right now. Tomorrow starts in-service for our faculty, they return tomorrow, and our students will return the following Wednesday to begin fall classes. Our enrollment is a little below where it was last year at this point. We're about 5.4 percent down as of today, and as a system, the Virginia Community College system is down about 7 percent. So we're above the system, but we're still a little bit below where we'd like to be. Our summer enrollment ended up about 4.5 percent below where it was last summer. We're hoping that next summer, maybe that will improve with the possible re-establishment of the summer PEL and year-round PEL opportunities. Today, we had an exciting day on campus. Senator Warner came, and we had the drone demo day. At about 2:30 this afternoon, he came to share opportunities with drones and with drone education. We've, we've actually got a program at the college that's funded by the National Science Foundation that allows students to, to take two courses this fall and two courses next spring that all work toward their technician career study certificate in unmanned aircraft systems operations, and there are scholarships available for anyone who's interested in taking those courses. They're, they're free, I think the first, can't remember if it's the first 20, 24 students who enroll in those courses can have their tuition free. It's a great opportunity. The courses are excellent resources for regional police, EMS operations, contractors, realtors, farmers, ranchers, videographers, others seeking to incorporate drone technology into their businesses. I know that Fred Coburn showed today some operations where if they replace cameras with infrared cameras or certain cameras, they can, they can detect disease in crops, they can find hotspots in lines before a lineman has to crawl up a pole. So there are a lot of different uses, and the college is promoting entrepreneurial aspects, entrepreneurial aspects as well, and for students who might be interested in starting their own business or seeking further information about drone technology. We also just wrapped up our 13th Annual Mountain Music School, and 2017 marked the highest attendance ever. We had 216 students, I believe, enrolled, ranging in ages from six to above 80. Majority of those students that are under 18 receive a scholarship to attend the one-week instructional program, and they're provided an instrument for the week if they need it. Mountain Empire Community College is grateful for the local funds that support this program, and we could not operate otherwise. There's a return on investment. Not only are we helping to preserve and protect our region's cultural heritage through music instruction, but Mountain Music School also is a great way to showcase the best of our region. At least a quarter of those students who attend the event are from outside our service region, and many stay in local hotels, camp around state parks, they eat in our local restaurants. And this year, Mountain Music School coordinated with the town of Big Stone Gap and other organizations, and they had a square dance, they had something every evening for students, so they, they made it somewhat of a camp. We also have our power lineman program, which is part of an ARC power grant, and that's off to a great start. We had 19 students enrolled for the summer. They finished a two-week worksite safety training session, they're now, we've hired an instructor, a full-time instructor for that program, and they are learning the power lineman program. They, they'll go through CDL training, so they'll have their CDL license, they'll also be able to work in the, well, we're actually leasing the former armory site and created a pole yard and a classroom space for students there. Enrollment is open until August 21st for any student who's interested. There are numerous opportunities if money is a very, is a barrier, numerous scholarship opportunities, numerous grant opportunities in certain programs. So, we encourage students who, who may be thinking about college, or even who may be thinking that, well, the tuition is, is there, but I can't afford books, I can't afford childcare, I can't afford those types of things. Many of these grant opportunities even have money for books, money for, for transportation, money for childcare, and so they're really great opportunities for students, especially anyone who's displaced by, who worked in a coal mine or coal mine industry or coal industry. There are many opportunities for those folks, but anyone who's interested, I think the college seeks funding to support students who are, who are interested in coming back to college, who may have monetary barriers. I just share a little bit about myself. I've been in the role now for about six weeks and two days, something like that. I came from Martinsville, Virginia. I was at Martinsville, Virginia for the last six years, where I served as the Vice President for Academic and Student Services there. And I came to Virginia from, I actually was born in, born in Martinsville and lived there until I was six years old. My parents divorced when we were young, and my mother moved to Denver with, with us, and I spent much of my childhood in Denver. Denver, we lived in, very close to downtown, and the area kind of became dangerous. And one day, when we were in junior high, she just picked us up and said, "That's it." She moved us to a tiny little town called Old North Texas, where I spent much of my older high school years and much of my adult life in, in western Kansas. I didn't come to education, everyone, I've noticed that if you ask someone about their educational background, everyone has one. Everyone has a story about education, and mine's not necessarily the typical story of a, of a college president. I struggled in high school. I was challenged in many ways, and I got into a lot of trouble. I didn't like to go to school. I would miss a lot of school, eventually became a truant student. Dropped out of high school at 16 and thought that I knew everything that I needed to know to be successful in life. So, a few years after trying odd jobs, learning a trade, working in the oil field, working road construction, I realized that if I didn't go back and get an education, I was never going to be able to, to do the things that I wanted to do in life and to have a better way of life. And I kind of recognized the rut that I was in, and had the opportunity through, back then, I worked at a boat upholstery plant. I actually made boat upholstery. In Kansas, there aren't a lot of lakes, and so that, that boat plant lasted for about 18 months. And when it went out of business, I had an opportunity to go to college through the Job Training Partnership Act. And I didn't think I was college material, and I kind of pooh-poohed that idea, and a friend convinced me to take one-night class at an outreach site, and I took that class and had some success. And it was that one class that helped me on my journey through education, and, and so I eventually ended up enrolling at the community college. I started in a bookkeeping program. It was a nine-month program, it was a certificate program, and I started in that because I wanted to get out of manual labor, and that was the shortest program that I could take that culminated in something that would pay better than manual labor. It wasn't until I was in the college and experienced some success that my aspirations changed, and they've been changing my entire life. I changed my major to mathematics at some point, realized after a couple of years that there are only a few things that you can do with mathematics, and stay in a small town, and I wanted to stay in that small town. You could teach or become an actuary, and I already recognized that I didn't really like bookkeeping, so I decided to become a teacher. I also recognized that maybe I could help somebody get through some of the challenges that I faced when I was in high school and pursue and persist. So, I was a high school teacher for about 10 years, when the opportunity at the community college for me to teach math at the college presented itself. I took that opportunity and taught in the community college where I had been a student for three or four years. And as I say, our aspirations changed, and I learned a little bit more about administration, moved into some administrative roles. When I was in that role as an administrator at that college, I recognized some external things that were impacting the college, and I moved to the, to the state level and worked at the Kansas Board of Regents for a few years. And at the state level, I recognized some, some national policies that needed to change in order for colleges to be successful. One was really around college algebra and the barrier that it was creating for a lot of nursing students, for a lot of medical technology students, when really what they needed was statistics, and to be able to understand statistics, numeracy, proportional reasoning, and those things weren't being taught. So I worked at the University of Texas for a few years on a grant project to help kind of change the scene in terms of what was required in those fields, and did a lot of work with Marie Triasman, who was a, he was a genius. And it was, it was interesting to work for a genius. He actually won the MacArthur Genius Award, so I'm not joking when I say he was a genius. But it was there that I realized doing that national work that I really wanted to be back into college. So I was very selective. I had the opportunity to come home to Martinsville, and the Virginia Community College system is an extremely strong system, and I recognized that from my national work and wanted to be a part of that system. Was perfectly happy at Patrick Henry Community College to just stay there and, you know, be home, and that, that little voice that says, "You can do more," or "You should aspire to this," kind of started prodding at me, and it's been that way my whole life. People have said, "You should try this," or "You should try that." And when those opportunities availed themselves, I took them. So I ended up applying at Mountain Empire because it's a rural college, it serves a rural area, serves folks who have a mindset like I have, and I'm extremely happy to be there. In the first six weeks, two days, it succeeded all expectations. We have a wonderful staff and faculty there, great communities. I've met so many people, I, the worst thing is, I have a terrible memory in terms of names, so I, I recognize faces, but I haven't quite gotten it together with names. If they all had numbers, I'd be in great shape, but, but that's just a little bit about me. Hopefully, over the course of this year, we'll be, we'll be building a strategic plan, and we'll be asking for your input in terms of what you think the vision for the college should be and, and what should be encompassed in our mission. So we'll be working on that over the course of the year. I'm excited to be here and serve in this capacity. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Right here. Okay, I'll go on to approval of this first one.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And on the financials, our prior year budget... And on the financials, our prior year budget transfer.
Have one small transfer there that we need to make to the Thomas Walker Pool apartment. Had a little bit of overage there in salaries and some of the expenses, electric and water. Total amount $5,354.55, which can be taken from miscellaneous expense, which has more than enough to cover that.
Make a motion to approve this budget transfer. Okay, we got a motion to approve the budget transfer.
Second.
And we got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, next we'll go on to new business. First being Airport Authority Board Appointed. I actually got a contact today from a previous member and I'd like to be able to speak with him personally before we go ahead and appoint. So I'll ask to table it until next month.
Second.
Anybody opposed to that?
No.
Okay. Next is the victim witness program renewal.
Chair, you have a copy of the notice of the grant renewal in your packet. Grant provides $75,035 in federal funds, $25,012 in state funds for a total grant amount of $100,047. There's no local match required for this grant and a motion to accept the grant is in order.
I'll make a motion for the victim witness program grant renewal.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have task order for annual groundwater monitoring report.
Get a copy of the lane group task order number 17-02 for preparation of 2017 annual groundwater monitoring report for the closed landfill. The estimated cost on this mandatory report is $14,000. This is slightly higher than prior years due to problems with the monitoring network and the addition of one new well, which requires some additional testing. I would recommend that this be approved so that they'll have authority to go ahead and prepare. Normally, we take this up in November or December, but DEQ now asks that the report be completed as soon thereafter as the final testing of the year is done. That's usually done in early October, so we're trying to get the task orders in a little early this year.
What was the problem with the monitoring network?
How long do you have?
That much.
Well.
Has it been created?
Yes, it has. We drilled a new well. We've had, that entire network system over there, the monitoring system depended heavily upon landowner wells, homeowner wells. And we've had some issues with one for about four years.
On ESO?
Yes. And the water table level was dropping dramatically during that period of time. Water has reversed its course. They say water always runs downhill, but I'm not sure because it's reversed course at least twice over there based on what engineers have said and what DEQ believes since I've been here. But I understand that underwater ground flow can vary depending on the season, whether it's wet season, dry season, and what happens. But it has created some issues. We did get the new well in and have started testing on it. So hopefully, that will correct our problem. That's one of the issues that's been holding us up on getting release from DEQ on the groundwater monitoring. We're close on the gas monitoring. We've had good results for the past year and a half on the gas results. And so everything's lining up on that. And hopefully soon, we'll be requesting to be released from any future requirements to test on gas. We will have to continue on water for a while.
Thank you.
I think that word mandatory report kind of says it pretty much. Make a motion for the task order for the annual groundwater monitoring report. Approval for $14,000.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve task order number 17-02. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, next one is the task order for annual landfill gas monitoring report.
That one's two. You have a copy in your packet, task order 17-03. This will be for preparation of the annual landfill gas monitoring report. Estimated cost on this is $5,700. That's the same amount that it was last year.
Motion to approve 17-03.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve task order number 17-03. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, next in front of us, we have the school board request for a bond referendum.
Mr. Chairman, the memo that you have in your packet states that the school board's requesting $65,773,500 in funding to move forward with the school construction and renovation project. Since the board packet was prepared last Tuesday and since this board met last Tuesday in recess to discuss this matter further, the school board has since met again on this and amended their request that's being distributed across to you. I did distribute that out to you a little bit late last week so that you would get a look at it before you came in tonight. But they have amended that request now to $44,965,210, which is a significant decrease in the, from the initial request. And there's a copy of the school board's letter of request in there. I've taken the liberty, since I had prepared some information for you last week on what the actual debt service could potentially cost, I've prepared some new numbers based on a new issue amount for you to consider and look at tonight. Again, I have only used the real property tax as a source of revenue as we did last week and also used the assumption that a one-cent increase in the tax rate would yield $83,204. Also assumed a 30-year term and calculated the bond interest rate at both 2.5% and 3.5% to give you some idea of what the cost would be. There is an additional factor in the calculation and County Attorney and I discussed this some today. She's been in contact with an attorney who's been working on some of the other documents. But there is an additional factor in this calculation on the potential bond issuance costs and whether they would be paid by the bond issue itself. Many times that is done, the cost of issuing a bond, which is considerable in some instances, in most instances. And it can vary. You have, you have the, typically you have bond counsel costs. You have the financial consultant costs in preparing all the numbers and you also can have discount rates, underwriting costs, different things that can affect the total issue costs involved with putting the bond out. And I saw, just gathering some information, I had, I saw a range that it could run anywhere from like a half a percent of the bond issue up to five to eight percent of the bond issue. I think the attorney that Ms. Muncy spoke to and indicated in the range of five to six percent typically. Five percent cost on this, on a 40, say a $44 or $45 million bond, you're looking about $800,000 and that's.
I think it's actually more than that, unless I figured wrong.
Okay.
I will say that he told me that in discussions with their bond counsel that they would strongly recommend a minimum of five percent, given that Lee County is not a frequent issuer of bonds. It'll just take that much more, I guess, to get it going, but at a minimum.
Yeah, it's going to be too many. We talked on the fourth chair just before the meeting, so I haven't been back to the office and actually put any numbers to this.
I think it's closer to two.
Two point two, something.
Yeah. Now, in, and again, the, some of the information that I saw, basically, the lower the amount of the bond issue, the higher the percentage of the issuance costs. Because some of that's fixed regardless. So the higher dollar amount that you get into, typically then the percentage would go down. But it varies from case to case. It's hard to, without having them analyze it and give you solid numbers on what they think it would take to put this out, it's hard to give you a number. But I did use the $44,965 number to calculate debt service. I also used 45.5 million, just to round that up, just to give you some idea. And those, it's going to be fairly close on either one of those. But same information I gave you the other day, 30-year term for $44,965,210 bond issue. If the interest rate were 2.5%, you're looking at annual debt service of a little over 2.1 million. That would require a tax rate increase of real estate only of .2562, which would be a 41, 41% increase in the rate. At 3.5%, those numbers go up. The tax rate increase would have to be a little over 29 cents and you've got about a 47% increase. And of course, the 45.5 million there, again, that's just, that was a number I rounded up to to give you some idea of what the cost would be and how much they would increase if you use those. Also, in the information that was passed out to you there is a couple of other documents. One is a draft resolution for the board to consider. If you wish to adopt a resolution, to send this on to the circuit court judge for consideration of placing this on the ballot in November. And then the other document is the actual draft order that the judge would be asked to consider and sign. And again, this would not, when I first read the documents, the way the language read, I was a little bit concerned about whether this obligated the board to anything. We discussed earlier that there was no obligation. Even if the referendum passed, it did not obligate the board to issue the bonds. And there is state statute which basically says that after a referendum and if it is approved, the board may, not shall, but may elect to issue bonds by ordinance or resolution. There's also a question last week in our meeting about an expiration time on a bond referendum. That is eight years. You have up to eight years from the date of the referendum, if it's approved, to actually issue the bonds. You can request a two-year extension up to 10 years from the circuit court.
Mr. Poe, if I might add just one other thing, Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead.
When I spoke with Mr. Martin, which is the attorney that I know Dr. Austin has been in contact with, I know one thing he and I discussed, and again, I'm just throwing this out there, but one thing he and I discussed was, given that the school board had decreased what they were looking at from you all at this point, was there a cushion built into that at all, you know, not anticipating what might happen in the future with demolition cost, construction cost possibly increasing and those types of things? And again, that was just something he pointed out to me that, you know, I felt the need to pass on to you all, just as a, you know, something to think about.
I have a question, Doctor. These projected costs, do they include demolition architect fees?
Yes, sir. No, sir, at this point, those costs that you see do not include that demolition cost. We are looking at, with this being a three-year plan, if this were approved and it went to the ballot and was approved there, this would not start until next summer, which would give us two years from an operational standpoint to start planning for demolition, which plays into our agreement that we've talked about with the capital reserve account. We can start budgeting for that. So no, that is not included in this cost.
No, architect fees are there.
Yes, sir, they are in there. To Ms. Muncy's point, the proposed price structure, if you will, the structure, and I'm going to say the costs that are associated, this is a not-to-exceed cost that is certified by both OWPR and branch associates, who would be the companies that does the architect and engineering work as well as does the construction. And to your question, there's 8% allowed in there for planning, 10% contingency for renovation in case there's an issue. And on the new construction, there's, I think, 3% on planning and 5% contingency. So to answer Mr. Martin's question, yes, there is a contingency built in there, which means that if we don't run into issues and the stars align perfectly, then we would have some savings and not have to issue the total bond amount that's proposed. But again, those are 8 and 10%, which is the planning and the renovation cost and some contingency. And then also new construction, 3 and 5 on the contingency.
Thinking about this, I was concerned about ASTOM. Is that planned?
Yes, sir, that's in the plans. As you noticed, we shared with you some information. We had shared in a press release yesterday morning. And in those areas, you'll see where it had bus areas and parking areas, that does include the groundwork that goes in.
Any more questions for Mr. Austin? Any discussion on?
I'd like to make one point before we cast into it. You know, we've met numerous times and tried to work on the thing and the numbers have differed, you know, each and every time. I just feel like we don't, we ain't explored all avenues of things that we can look at. I mean, it went from, it dropped 21 million from last Tuesday that we met Thursday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, because y'all met on a Thursday. I just, I personally just take, took something into 30 years that probably won't be many of us sitting here ever get to see paid off. And it sure ain't because I don't have love for the school system. I coach, do a lot with the community, do a lot with the kids. I just, I just don't know if all things have been explored. And I know I'm just, everybody gets their own vote and everybody gets to say their own piece, but I feel like that need to be said.
Well, I'd like to just also add that, you know, from my standpoint, I feel like, I feel like personally that the citizens should have some say-so and I think they are the ones that should have the say-so. And I feel strongly about letting them have their opportunity to speak about it.
Well.
Mr. Chairman, another comment before.
You might.
To address your point, Mr. Poe, what the school board started out with, with a proposal when we first met was almost $110 million. When you look at the actual renovation, new construction cost of work that needs to be done, the school board worked diligently, in my opinion, from February through July. Came up with a $66 million proposal. Now, what's the difference between last Tuesday and this Tuesday? School board met on Thursday and we looked at a proposal of downscaling from some additional new construction, looked at the significance of some renovations and reduced a request for a new construction down to a minor renovation and a significant renovation down to a minor renovation. Trying to find this to be something that was palatable based on numbers that Mr. Poe shared at your meeting last Tuesday. And looking back at, I'm going to say, recent history, Mr. Poe's done a good job looking at numbers. But when you look at a 26 cent real estate tax increase, that's daunting. I understand that. But at the meeting on Tuesday, he had shared with us 10 years ago, we went up 10 cents on real estate and 59 cents on property tax. In a similar manner, if you did something similar to that now, based on the numbers that he's got, we could cover the cost of this. So, you know, putting it all on real estate is one perspective, but you as a board have the opportunity to look at real estate tax as well as personal property tax in a similar manner and get at the same thing. So, yes.
So, yes, it's an investment. Are there other options? I'll say frankly, we, you know, the school board administration's been working on this since last May. This is not a half-hearted effort by any stretch of the imagination. This is what we feel like is putting the best foot forward and making an investment that we need to make. It's one way or the other, we've gotta get at facilities, and this puts us a step forward for at least the next ten years. So, that's from school board's standpoint, where we are with enrollment trends and what we've seen with enrollment numbers from now through 2025, this is something that, with this structure and what we're proposing, would put us in a good position ten years from now.
What happens after ten years?
Then we reevaluate, and if Lee County's growing, then of course, this, these buildings, if y'all know if you've looked at the basic blueprint, would give us some room to grow. But then, if we're continuing to decline, we could address that also. This would be something that, again, gets us through ten years, but you all know from your seats, if you look back ten years ago at where we were budget-wise, it's a different world. And things change every five years definitely, but especially ten years from an educational standpoint. So, from a facilities plan, we try to develop ten-year plans.
I ask one more question that's been driving me crazy, is that you're gonna build two new elementary schools, and then you're gonna combine the kids into the middle school at both tech facilities. Is there that much room there to handle?
Between the capacity at Lee High and a career tech, yes, sir. This would put the eighth grade in at Lee High, which we have capacity for, we currently have around six-hundred-and-seventy students. Capacity there is almost eight-hundred. If you remember when that school was built, we had almost eleven-hundred students in that building at one time. So, we have the capacity there to handle that. And back to the a hundred-and-ten million dollar option, the middle school's thirty million dollar price tag by itself. So, in what we've discussed with other options, when you're talking about the core of engineers and other possible money that may be coming, we thought that this would be the most fiscally responsible thing to do, is use existing property, renovate or build on current school board property as opposed to trying to acquire land.
That kinda confused me, too, that the middle school's gonna cost thirty million dollars, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna put them in low tech schools in Lee High.
Well, the career tech...
I don't understand that.
The career tech center in Lee High is not the best option. I mean, it's not. It would be a temporary solution, because we want to grow the career tech program. We want to access those rooms and those buildings that are currently not being utilized, and use available space, because if we were able to build the middle school, we probably would end up doing away with the career tech building, or portions of it, because of its age and its current condition. But again, that's three to five years down the road.
And doing away with the technical program?
No, sir, just the space.
Where we didn't go.
Some of it would be integrated into the new middle school, or into Lee High, again, looking at capacities.
Well, when I think about that, you know, maybe three to five years, we're gonna be in a dire straits problem there about a middle school. I think that's just bandaged on the big cut. I just don't understand it.
Well, again, the eighth grade can easily go into Lee High currently, and this would put sixth and seventh in the Fort Quillan building and the Fort Quillan programs into the career tech center.
I just didn't realize you had that much room down there.
If you'd like to, one day, I'd be glad to take your tour. It's an amazing facility that's underutilized, and we're working to change that.
All right, Tom, ahead. We got a question out here.
I'm Sonny Brooks, I'm from West Virginia. What happens if we do nothing? If you've been to our existing buildings, you know they're in total disrepair. All you gotta do is go to a building, pick 'em out. You don't do something, the devil's gonna come and prey here for long.
And I wanna say something I've said before, this is not a knock on our custodial staff.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that at all. And matter of fact, they do an excellent job doing what they go with what they go. I'm not, I'm not being negative towards anybody. But I mean, go to your buildings and look. And it's, it's mind-boggling sometimes, it really is.
With all due credit, Dr. Austin, since he's been a superintendent, he has not asked us for any extra money. And every year since I've been on this board, which will be eight years, they've been here asking for all kinds of money. Now, what did they do with it? Why didn't they take it and repair their buildings?
I can answer that for you.
Go ahead.
No, I can, I can answer that for you, Larry, real easy, real easy. And I agree with you, where did it go?
Well, I mean, we're fiscally responsible for all the county buildings. The school board is responsible for the fiscal well-being of their building. And, you know, I sat in meetings with interns, companies about what was going on, I don't know if you were here then or not, Dr. Austin.
No, sir, I've heard about the conversations.
Yeah. That's where I stand. You know, I agree, there's things that need to be done, but how much needs to be done? I'm not against putting this on the ballot, people won't go and don't have that full amount.
Well, I agree with them, too. There's gotta be something done. I took a tour, Dee Dee, myself, and Mr. Poe, we took a tour back around the, probably the first year sometime, and the schools aren't in bad shape, and something's gotta be done. And I agree with Larry there, what happened to the money with the previous, you know? But, we don't know, or I don't know, Sonny back here knows, but I don't know. But something does have to be done, and I think the people need to decide that. I think they need to decide what needs to be done. If they don't want it, they can say no.
I think it's two thousand eight or two thousand nine, they received six million dollars through the American Recovery Act.
Dr. Austin, are you afraid to put the formal on it that we had last week?
Not afraid, but when you look at the dollar amount, and we were talking about the real estate tax increase, and the candid frank conversation that we had, and Mr. Kidwell and I had a conversation after we left here, and how bare bones can we get and still be able to function again within a ten-year plan? You know, the ideal would be the hundred-and-ten million, let's go ahead and fix everything at one time. The, I'm gonna say, the good plan would be the sixty-six million with constructing what we discussed last week, and again, proprietary information, I'm not gonna get into a lot of that. But by paring it down as we have, this is about as bare bones as it gets as far as a plan for the next ten years. You know, to Mr. Brooks' point of what do we do if this doesn't pass, then we go back to the drawing board and we start looking at our facilities and figuring out which ones we can repair. We have a lot of facilities that are underutilized, as is evidenced by our facility study. We have some of our buildings operating at sixty percent of capacity. That's not efficient. So, when you start talking about closing buildings, there's only one of our buildings that is in decent enough shape to even consolidate two, and that would be Lee High, and it's not in great shape. So, in order to consider improving our efficiencies and operations, we would have to work on either new construction or renovating some buildings to be able to centralize more operations. So, what do we do? Back to the drawing board, but it wouldn't take long to come up with a plan.
I think you can look at the adjoining counties and look what they did with their funds, and I think you'll find that a couple of the counties are in pretty bad shape now, because they did do the hundred-and-twenty million, whatever, Mr. Slimp, I'm sure knows that, from where he's at, and it's not, I mean, they're, they're in dire straits, because they didn't do what Dr. Austin did, go bare bones.
Just to make a comment on that, Sonny, the Wise County system's tax rate is less than ours now, after they built the schools. And I think that one of the issues is, everybody's been to these schools, know what kinda shape they in. I'm not saying that. But I don't know if we can fix sixty or seventy years' worth of, let's just Band-Aid, let's just Band-Aid, let's just Band-Aid it on one time. I mean, you only have a small percentage of people that actually work in this county, less than fifty percent.
It's twenty-seven percent.
Okay, well, that twenty-seven percent is gonna be paying the hundred percent of...
I agree one hundred percent, but we gotta start somewhere.
I don't argue that. I'm just, don't know for sure if this is the correct place to start, which we'll vote. I mean, we'll vote, and wherever it goes, it goes. I'm just throwing my two cents in the ring.
We all know that, you know, county, what the county operates on, which, that's, but it's, we gotta do something, we really do.
I agree we gotta do something.
Well, it helps to also know that you got a year cushion in there on the bond to operate on both.
If I could stay with you, state one more thing, just for the boards' knowledge. I know when we met last time, you all discussed the possibility of if this went through incrementally increasing the tax rate, because, you know, the construction cost would be over a three-year period. One other thing that Mr. Martin and I discussed, and he pointed out to me, and I didn't, I didn't bring it up to him, he pointed it out to me, was that if it was done over a period of time like that, that it did make the bonds less appealable to be sold, because the debt service wasn't there. It wasn't something that necessarily was guaranteed. So again, that's just something for the boards' information.
I would suspect that would drive the issuance cost up, too, because, again, the smaller the bond issue, a lot of the overhead costs are gonna be the same regardless, so probably increase that if you do it incrementally.
As you're aware, Mr. Kidwell's here, our chair, do you...
Thank you. Yeah, I think our citizens are gonna be aware of what the cost is gonna be, you know.
Well, they're gonna do, Mr. Austin, you said you was gonna do slide shows, you're gonna go to the schools, make the, the public, the citizens aware of what this cost is gonna be.
Yes, sir. With more guidance, that's one of the things, in a couple of weeks, we will, depending on your approval, have the firm and the architect and engineer come in and do renderings, which is the drawings of what the buildings would look like, what renovations may look like, and have that as a kickoff in late August, early September, and then pretty much weekly meetings from there in each one of the buildings and divisions.
Appreciate you answering the questions.
I wasn't dissing on you, I know. You have good questions.
I'll have to say, you burn, I jump in water with James Lynn. I think I understand what you say, and that's what's gonna happen.
Well, I think it's for the people to decide, not just us five up here. I think that that's what, we're elected folks up here, and I feel personally like that those people that elect us should have the final say-so. That's my opinion. But that's just one opinion out of five.
I think I say that everything at the last meeting, that it's up to the voters.
And they are gonna be made aware of it, and there's no way you can get around the fact of not knowing what it's gonna cost.
I like, maybe it was done in Wise County. We are giving the voters the opportunity to either turn it down or approve it.
Well, we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I am taking that motion, and we put the cushion on the ballot in order to give our voters the opportunity to either turn it down or approve it.
At what amount?
At the new amount of, what is it, forty...
Well, the request is forty-four, about forty-five, forty-nine.
Forty-four thousand nine hundred.
My question is, do you wanna add, do you wanna add a provision for bond issuance cost potential?
Wouldn't it be forty-five, uh...
No.
No, no, based on...
Oh, okay, I got it.
That was just a number I drew out of a hat today, so, based on our discussion with Mr. Martin. You're talking two-point-two million, you're looking at a total at a five percent increase, or five percent issuance cost, forty-seven million, two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy dollars, you can round it any way you want to.
Okay, forty-seven million, what?
Two-thirteen, four-seventy.
Two-thirteen, four...
That may not be, I mean, you know, the issuance cost may be more or less, there's no way to know.
Okay, the bond will be somewhere in the area of forty-seven million, two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
That would be the maximum by now.
Maximal now.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
None.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, next on the list, we have personal property tax relief for 2017.
Chairman, the Personal Property Tax Relief Act provides for state reimbursement of a portion of the tax on personal automobiles. This reimbursement is now a fixed amount, so the percentage of tax relief on that that can be granted from year to year must be recalculated based on the total value of vehicles that are subject to the tax. The commissioner's office has calculated that amount this year, the percentage of relief for the 2017 tax year is sixty-two point one-six percent. You have a resolution number seventeen dash oh in in your packet that would enforce that.
I think the motion would approve Resolution seventeen dash zero one zero on the Personal Property Tax Relief Act. Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
And we got a second on Resolution seventeen dash zero one zero, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
This chairman, if you business also have, it's not on there, surplus property bids, I had hoped to have last week, but wasn't able to do so, but we did take sealed bids on two pieces of surplus property of the county. The Stone Creek Polling House property, which consists of about point oh-four of an acre and a roughly a fourteen-by-fourteen square cinder block building. Also, the Ewing Elementary School property, which consists of approximately eleven acres, and the old school building itself. I think, have all of you received a bit of old text across there on this? We got two bids on the Stone Creek property, the four hundred dollars, and the high bid of five hundred and one dollars. We had three bids on the Ewing Elementary School property. This was close, two bids at ten thousand even, one bid at ten thousand and one dollar. Strategy. And if the board wishes to accept the high bid for each property, a motion to do so would be in order.
Make the motion to accept both bids, five oh one for the Stone Creek Polling House, and the ten thousand, one dollar for the Union Elementary School.
Okay, we got a motion to accept the two high bids.
Second.
And we got a second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Get some folks' bottoms of property.
All right.
And I guess some folks' bottoms of property. And I guess some votes bottom to the property.
The rest of that I'll take up under the portion recommendations. I've got four other items that I need to discuss. Sorry, I've got, I had about as much come in after, we got the agenda out on time this time, and everything came in from Wednesday morning to Thursday.
Pardon? Four, five days early, actually.
Pardon?
Do they have a closed session?
No, I have one item for closed session that I would like to discuss with you, and that, it would be under investing in public funds.
And I think with Robert was on to make a request for a closed session on personnel.
But I have four other items, two of them are just informational, more or less, and two others could potentially have action, so.
We got any, anything else from our county attorney?
No, nothing else for me to know.
All right, the first item I want to take up to you, you should have a double-sided document there from the Board of Registars Association of Virginia. They had a webinar, phone discussion last week, I was not able to sit in on it, but the electoral board members did at the registrar, and this letter came out from the registrar's association as a result of that webinar. There is some concern by the state electoral board about the, I guess, reliability and the resistance to hacking of the existing touchscreen voting machines that we currently have. They, they made the machine available at a hacking convention, I think in Las Vegas recently, and they were able in about an hour and a half to hack into the machine. There have been some issues on these machines regardless, we've had them for, I think, roughly about ten years now, but then they're, they do have a potential as they get older for failure, occasionally they'll have some issues with them. We had budgeted to begin the process of replacing those with the scanner types, going back to paper ballots. We had budgeted about a third of that for this year to replace a third of the machines and begin that transition over a three-year period, but they have now submitted the machine to, or the Virginia Information and Technology Agency, or VITA, is exploring the reliability of these machines right now, and there's been some discussion about the possibility of decertifying them for at least a couple of years now. The State Board of Elections did take action two years ago to decertify some other machines and warn that this one may be in the process, that's one of the reasons we went ahead and moved forward in budgeting for that this year, but based on the information that they were given the other day, they basically are saying that the decision to decertify these machines is completely in the hands of the State Board of Elections, and that they can make a decision anytime between now and the election, and if they decertify those machines before the election, we cannot use them. They are not offering any funding relief to help us acquire new machines. I asked the registrar if she would inquire of the vendor that we were looking at to buy the new machines, if he would be willing to sell us the full amount that we intend to buy over a three-year period and bill us accordingly over a three-year period. The only way he'll do that is to charge interest, and she indicated, I asked her today what, if he'd made an actual offer, and she, I think he just told her that we could probably get better rates at our local bank if he could provide us. But that is an option to go ahead and replace all the machines now. They may not be decertified between now and the election, but the closer to election time, if it should happen, the closer to that time it is, it would greatly restrict our ability to be able to get all the machines potentially, especially, I think there's about twelve counties in the state who are still using these machines, depending on how many of them are looking at these same type machines for replacements would determine whether or not we could get to the full supply of what we're looking for, which is basically eighteen machines. We need sixteen, and they want to have two spares in case something happens to one. Total cost of, of buying everything that we would need, this would be the machines, the bases that collect, that sort the ballots, and the voting stations that would be used. Total cost of all that's about a hundred, it's, I had a tab I ran down, and I ran off left, about a hundred and sixty-three thousand and something. We have fifty-six thousand budgeted this year, so we would have to tap into reserves for about a hundred and seven or a hundred and eight thousand dollars to buy all the machines now, and sort of hedge against the threat that they may decertify those machines, we can go ahead and put all of them into use. There is an advantage to doing that, we were trying to cushion the blow to the budget by spreading this out over three years, but in the upcoming election, we were going to acquire a portion of these new machines. So, so the new machines with paper ballots would have been used in some precincts, and then other precincts would have continued using the electronic touchscreen devices. So you had two different types of voting systems out there. It'd just be a little bit confusing possibly on election day if a precinct calls in and says we've got a problem with the machine, that they've got to check, okay, which machine do we have out there, do we have the new one or the old one, things of that nature. Also, the training of election officials, you're, if you have new ones coming that haven't worked before, you're going to be training them on two potentially different machines, depending on what precinct they're at, so if we go ahead and make the full purchase now, that would streamline that process, a trading would take place on all of them at the same time, we would be using the same system completely for the next three years and then further into the future, so just want to toss that out there as a possibility for you to consider.
What did we go with, person up six?
We were looking at buying six this year, six next year, and six the following, yeah, just, yeah. Now, the bases, we only need fourteen of the bases, because we're down to that number of precincts, but to have two extra machines, they can just, they can remove the machine off of the base and replace it like that, you don't need the extra bases. So that's what we were looking to do.
That leads to the question of storage.
That's going to be an issue, and that, the registrar's and electoral board office space is one of the things I want to talk to you in closed session.
Do we have to act on this now, or give approval if it's needed, or make approval after purchase?
Uh, you can say approval if needed, it could be literally, and nothing surprises me anymore, it could be October the twenty-seventh that the State Board of Elections say we're decertifying those machines, and then we're sitting there with ten days, eleven days before the election trying to get equipment, which would be practically impossible, I think, to get it set up and get everybody trained. So, I mean, you're, I don't, at this point, I think you either go or you don't go. We either stick to the six per year and go with that, or we go ahead and buy all of them. Again, we were going to plan to buy them anyway, if what I could do, we could set it up, I could check rates with local banks and see what kind of rate they would give us on financing that, or we could simply take the additional hundred thousand out of reserve.
What's the availability of the old machines at this moment?
I don't know of that, I'd have to check. And again, I don't know what the other twelve, the other eleven localities will do, I don't know what machines they're looking at.
If they decertify, is there any reimbursement for the state?
No. When we went to these touchscreen machines, there were, there was funding available to move away from the old stuff, but there's nothing out there now. Everybody was in hopes that when they did get around to decertify, especially since these were the type machines that the state was promoting for a while, but we were in hopes that there would be some state funding behind it, but it's not that.
Could we, this being when it is, could we table, let you do some financial findings?
I can, I can get some.
Your foreign banks and then whatever, then put it on the agenda for the next, would that give us time?
Yes, we could take that, set deeper, that would give us.
That sure gives two.
Uh, not quite two months. Close to that, I'll check the availability, and if push came to shove, if availability is low, you could always have a call meeting.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we have, yeah.
I'll get some additional info on that there. The second item I have, we lost a part-time employee three weeks ago, I guess, a convenience center worker at the Woodway site passed away. I don't know, I think Mr. Collins was talking to Mr. Bowles about that, I don't know how he wants to proceed on that, but we aren't sure if it operated there. I will make you aware as well. Not sure if all of you are aware of this, though, we use program, it used to be called Experience Works, now it's under, oh shoot, I forget what agency took it over, but uses older workers and allows them up to twenty hours a week to work on sites, they pay the labor and everything, they can allow them to be out there for as much as two years. We've actually hired some of those people as permanent part-time employees, but we still have, I'm not sure exactly how many we still have, but we typically use them to stack the convenience centers, since the part-time employees that we have only work twenty-five hours a week, it gives us a little bit more presence out there. That program, effective October one, is going through some radical changes, and they simply are not going to have, be able to place people in the, in the way that we do. Each employee that they place would have to be supervised a hundred percent of the time by an employee of the county, and there's, there's no point in having two people there at the same time, so it's, he's, he, Gary has indicated that he may have use for one that could work there at the transfer station, work at the gate, inside at the transfer station, some assistant people in and out of the building, but other than that, that, that requirement is pretty much going to make the program non-workable for us, so just make you aware of that at the same time. Also, I got an email today on the legislative reception that typically is hosted by the IDAs of each county in the Colfield counties, as well as boards of supervisors, a lot of different agencies send people to the reception, it's held in January, this year it would be scheduled to be held January twenty-fifth, I just need to know, I need to give them an answer by Friday if we intend to participate, they do still have some funding available, we have, typically we contribute twenty-five hundred dollars a year to that. Gives you access to a lot of state agencies, representatives from their offices, elected officials, different ones at that reception, so if, if you want us to continue, we've been a part of that for well over ten years now, I don't know exactly how many. And I, again, I need to give her an answer by Friday if we plan to participate. The last item I sent you is some information about the extension office holding interviews this coming Friday for the four-H position, does, I got one response back, does anyone want to sit in on those interviews? It's going to be an all-day process, basically they're starting at nine-thirty and finishing up about four-thirty. I need to let her know if somebody's gonna be there or not.
Who suggested that, they've never done that before?
They have asked at different times, depending on if it's a, an agent, at different times, different unit managers have asked for a representative of the board if they want to, to sit in on it, it gives the county some input into the process, but it's not mandatory that somebody has to be there, but it's just, they make that offer to, to the governing body, if someone, if a member of the board wants to sit in on the interviews. And I need to let her know something since today's Tuesday. It's Fri, this Friday, the eighteenth. Everything deadline is eighteenth this week. I'll bidget those, I'll come back to those before we leave here tonight, I'm gonna keep my list open so that I don't let you out of here before I get an answer from you, and I've not heard from anybody else about the VACO conference in November, so I really need to know something, I still have you indicated you're not interested, but I just, I need to confirm that, because I need to lock everything down this week. And other than the request for closed session under investing in public funds, that's all I have.
I got one thing on the board, the, one committee I'm on, the CSA committee, I spoke to you that we'd have to reappoint somebody, they actually changed the times back to nine o'clock in the morning, matter of fact, it's, Dr. Austin's actually, this Thursday at nine, this Thursday at nine, and due to my work schedule, I can't attend meetings at nine o'clock in the morning, so. Somebody won't step up and point that, which I, I made that clear the day that they voted on the time of the meeting, due to my hundred-twenty mile drive every day and timeframe, it'd be hard for me to make it, so.
Larry and I are old guys, and we don't know what the CSA is, child services.
Technically, it's.
Therefore, I know that y'all slip up to take my.
Technically.
CSA board.
It's not the CSA board, it is the Community Policy and Management Team, that, and they are just that, they, they set policy and manage the expenditures under the CSA, under the Child Services Act.
I'm too many kids to do that. I don't know, can't do that, conflict the interest.
Slid right away.
Make the motion.
Say anybody willing to step up to, I can't do it.
I can't do it. Charles, what? He can't.
Paul Johnson.
No, it has to be, it has to be a board, board representative, they need a board representative.
Was that something, I mean, that, that you were interested in, I mean, apparently you were interested in, you were doing it, I just, is that something that time can be changed back to?
No, no, we, we, we had an in-depth discussion, we changed the time for well over a year, and then they decided for convenience, they was going to change it back, it fitted, you know, eighty percent of their scheduling better, and the only reason to change in the first place was to accommodate mine, and then when they decided it would be better off to change it back, I mean, I explained it there that day, I said, look, there's no way that I can be at that timeframe, which I didn't know was that timeframe when I got placed on to start with, but it's worked out for a year and a half, I tried to attend as many meetings as possible, some of them I did make it nine, and then they changed it to three, and I tried to make some meetings possible. I think it was one of them seven that I got placed on that nobody spoke of, is how I got there to start with. I mean, I didn't care to serve on it, enjoy serving on it, but with the timeframe, I just, I just wouldn't be able to, so I actually told them that I would do my best to try to get a new representative between now and the board meeting, which is Thursday, so somebody step up where they want.
We need to make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, we're going into closed session on the depiction of, I see, I'm an official, no, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, in performance, it's under two point two. Okay, in performance, it's under two point two dash three seven one one, eight point one, employment personnel, and then also under two point two, three seven eleven, eight point six, investment of public funds.
Kevin, you got a motion?
Second.
And we got a second, any discussion? All in favor, going into closed session?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We're now in closed session.